Good afternoon. It's Tuesday. I can't believe it's November already, November the 12th. This is a very loud microphone, so to my dear friend in the back room, thank you. We will begin tonight's mail seat. Tonight's the 12th of November. My name's Susan Adams. On behalf of the Roanoke Park City Council, it's my pleasure to welcome you here for our meeting. We will begin by inviting you to stand with us for the land acknowledgement. The City of Roanoke Park acknowledges indigenous peoples as a traditional stewards of the land. City of Roanoke Park is located within the traditional homelands of the Federated Indians of Great Manchuria comprised of Kosk Mewak and Southern Pomo peoples. Thank you. Go ahead and invite our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Elward?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Sandborn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jiriche?
President.
Mayor Adams?
I'm here as well. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead with the pledge of allegiance. And Betsy, would you give us a pledge? Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, please? Thank you. Thank you. So item number four, presentations. Manager Piedra, do we have any presentations this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, we do. I'm going to actually allow our interim Director of Finance, Betsy Hose, come up and introduce our new finance manager. So Ms. Hose, if you can come up and introduce our new finance manager. Thank you.
Your microphone's not on yet.
Nope.
Yeah.
Let's try it again. There we go. Good evening, everyone. I am very happy to be here tonight to introduce Yassa Valencia. She is our new finance manager, but she's not really new because she served Roanoke Parks about a year and eight months ago. She was here. And during her time here, she spent five years as an accountant and two years as a management analyst until she took a little hiatus to go over to the city of St. Helena. And she was there for about a year and eight months. And we are so excited to have her back. And she's just hitting the ground running. And we're just, everyone's just so excited. She knows our system. She knows us. And so I'm just really expecting great things from her. And so I would like to introduce Yassa and allow her to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Betsy. Good evening, Mayor and council members and city manager. I am very glad to be back working for the city of Roanoke Park. It is a pleasure to be serving again. And I'm looking forward to collaborating with the city manager as well as the finance director with any financial matters. And, you know, collaborating with anything that's related to, you know, any opportunities with finance and as well as any other opportunities with the city as well. So I'm looking forward to this and I'm looking forward to working with everyone very closely in the other departments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Betsy. I kind of got a little off track here and I forgot to recognize on the dais with us, our city clerk, Sylvia Lopez Cuevas, our city attorney, Michelle Kenyon, and our city manager, Marcella Piedra. And we have some members of Manager Piedra's team in the room as well. So we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda to public comments. Do we have any public comments cards?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Number seven, consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one or more actions of the city council or the city financing authority, successor agency, to the Community Development Commission, whichever is applicable unless any council member or anyone else interested in a consent calendar item has a question about the item. Is there anyone in the audience or on the dais who'd like to pull an item or discuss it? All right. Any public comments about the consent calendar? All right. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. We have first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Item 8A, regular items, discussion of direction regarding transferring appointment of the golf course, oversight committee from the Parks and Recreation Commission to the city council and establishing it as a council-appointed committee. Welcome to the table, the Director of Public Works, Vanessa Garrett.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, because I'm liaison and I know we're not voting, I don't need to recuse myself. Is that correct?
That's correct. You do not. You do not have a conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. So tonight, I don't have a presentation. I just have a short little blurb on the golf course oversight committee and why we're here tonight. So for a little bit of background, in 2001, as a result of a grand jury response regarding the maintenance of the city's golf course, the city manager at the time established a golf course oversight committee. And it was part of the Parks and Recreation Commission originally. They were tasked with meeting quarterly and reviewing maintenance reports that were put together by staff. And we still do this, you know, quarterly with CourseCo, who's our leasee, and five members of the golf course oversight committee. At this point, the Parks and Recreation Commission actually appoint different members to be on the golf course oversight committee. But earlier this year, the city council requested that an item be brought back to discuss the appointment process for these reps. So at this point, I'm bringing it back here tonight. We have five golf course oversight committee members total. There are three committee members that are up for reappointment at the end of this year. And then the other two are up for appointment in 2026. So tonight's staff is seeking direction on any changes to the appointment process, which currently is to have the Parks and Rec Commission appoint this committee. And it's pretty timely because we do have a few seats that are open for reappointment.
Thank you very much. Do you have any public comment cards?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So council direction and discussion. Let's start with Councilwoman Sandborn. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. I was just curious if anyone's spoken with those who are currently overseeing the golf course and what their feedback was on the proposed change.
We did bring it up at our meeting last Tuesday night with the golf course oversight committee and just let them know that, you know, they're able, if they would like to come tonight, they could. And that we're just discussing the item as far as the current process and if the council would like to make changes. So that's what we brought up with them. See anybody here tonight, though?
So really, the changes almost just administrative. It's streamlining the process and adding it in with all of the other committees and appointments that we do now. They could all, all five could still apply for these positions.
Everyone would, yeah, could reapply for the positions.
Great. Thanks.
Nope. Just that I appreciate the report out. I think, you know, we had an open seat and it caught my eye, expecting to see applications. It was like, oh, we already appointed somebody. So as Councilmember Sandborn said, it's streamlining. And as we are updating, there was a presentation recently on committees and commissions for the city. You know, I think this is very timely to discuss that and hope to have, continue a diverse kind of representation for one of our largest assets in the city. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I don't have any comment.
Thank you, Mr. Jiriche.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. What was the feeling on Parks and Rec Commission about this?
I haven't announced, I haven't brought it up with the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I just would like to join my colleagues in saying thank you for the report. I personally think this is where this committee ought to come from. This is one of our largest assets in the city. And I think it's something that ought to be overseen a little more closely by the city council. So with that, if, does anyone else have any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we, or we don't, we're just giving direction. I'd like to follow the direction that you've outlined here. Let's go through and ask, Councilwoman Sandborn?
I agree with that.
Okay.
I also agree with that.
Okay.
Same.
That's five. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 8B, we need to slow it down here because it's only 15 minutes after five. 8B, consider adopting a resolution authorizing and approving an employment agreement between the city of Roanoke Park and Betsy Hose for Director of Finance. And we will have a staff report by city manager, Marcella Piedra.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and council members. It gives me great pleasure to be able to have this item before you for consideration to approve an employment agreement with Betsy Hose, our interim finance director. She has been serving in this position since May of 2024. And we are delighted that she has agreed to work and continue being part of such a great city and serve as our permanent Director of Finance. Just in form of background, Betsy has more than 25 years in working with local government, especially with financial, in the financial area, and particularly in municipal finance. It's, it has been a challenge trying to find, especially finance directors, and finding the type of experience that we need for our city to be able to obviously thrive as it relates to our finance, finance department. As you heard earlier, we also were very fortunate to hire a new finance manager. And I'm very happy that Ms. Hose has decided to join us permanently for the Director of Finance position. She has more than 27 years. She, obviously, part of her professional experience includes working for the county and also working for the city of Santa Rosa in the finance department. As part of this action, I do need to read a required statement to comply with Government Code Section 54953. This is related to the need to provide an oral summary of compensation and benefits. So as it relates to the employment agreement with our Director of Finance with Ms. Hose, is the annual base salary will be $194,112.81 per year. Any cost of living increases accorded to the council's adopted outline of certain conditions of employment, fringe benefits, and salary for the management unit. So those will be related to that particular management unit. There's a credit of a balance of 80 hours of annual leave and accrual of annual leave at a rate of 232 hours per year. Participation in CalPERS in the 2% at 55 program and fringe benefits, including health insurance, disability benefits, retiree health savings contributions, and employer retiree contribution in accordance with the council's adopted outline of certain conditions of employment, fringe benefits, and salary for the management unit. So this is a summary of the employment agreement that's before you, again, consistent and required as it relates to the Government Code section related to executive compensation. With this, if you have any questions, obviously, I would be happy to have, you know, Ms. Hose, after you take action, come up and just express how she feels about joining our team permanently here at the city of Roanoke Park. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I think we kind of bribed her to say something nice about it already. So I'm expecting that. Any, right, any, any questions? Comments? Okay, any questions or comments?
Well, yeah, just, we don't bribe.
Nope, nope. We showed our great appreciation.
Yes, but we're very, at least, I'll speak for myself, very excited to welcome Betsy back. It's been great having you back and to have you permanently is nice.
Thank you for correcting that. Yes. Councilwoman Elward?
Betsy, we have seen your work and we are so glad that you are here back helping again our finance department. And with your expertise, we know the future is bright. So thank you for accepting to come back and work with us.
Yeah, I did owe that. And it's been great getting to know you again. And welcome back. And now that the finance department is really squared away with both of you here now, I'm excited for our city manager. She can dedicate her time and energy in other directions where she's needed. So that's great. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues. It's a pleasure to have you here. I know your, your team over there is very excited. And we're excited as well. And I haven't seen Marcella smile this big since she got here. So regarding the finance department. So if you'd like to say a few words, we'd certainly welcome that.
Thank you, everyone, so much for those kind words. I am really, truly excited to be back on a permanent basis. I've really enjoyed the time that I've been here since May. And it just felt so much like home because I had relationships previously with so many of the people here and then meeting all of the new staff that have come on board since then. It's really been great. And with each new challenge that comes forward, I just get more excited. I love implementing new projects. I love implementing new programs as well. I'm already doing budget planning because it's my favorite thing in the whole wide world to do. I do love the technical side of accounting, but I love the budget process. And so I'm, I'm really excited to be putting that together and having a lovely budget for you to, to see at study sessions when we get those going. So thank you very much for this opportunity. And I will do everything in my power to provide you with a really good, solid finance department with information that you can rely on and the best that I can do in helping to find money for programs and resources and those kinds of things. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. In my excitement, I neglected to invite public comment on this item. Is there, are there any public comment cards for this item?
I do not have any comment cards, Mayor, but I see a person approaching. It's for a different item.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a resolution. Is there someone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make motion.
Second.
All right. Would you go ahead and read the resolution for me, Sylvia?
Yes, the following vote. It's for the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-100, authorizing and approving the Director of Finance employment agreement between the city of Roanoke Park and Betsy House.
Is this a voice vote or a real call?
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes by five zero.
Congratulations. Official. All right. Number nine, committee and liaison and other reports, city standing committees, council liaison assignments, outside agency, mayors and council members, city selection and committee appointments. We'll start with Councilwoman Elward, Homeless Coalition Board of Directors and Sonoma Clean Power Authority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start with the Homeless Coalition. And we have a recap of October meeting. So the first point was, we talked about the 2025 point-in-time count. County staff are planning to meet with city staff soon to plan for the 2025 homeless point-in-time count. Their goal is to prevent the data discrepancy that we saw in the 2024 count. The second thing is, we also heard from the lead agency discussion, the board requested information about how to change lead agencies. This was agendized for the November meeting. So we're going to do it next month. The lead agency is responsible for coordinating and overseeing the countywide homeless system of care. And on a last point was, the county is currently the lead agency. Because there was quite a bit of confusion about who was the lead agent, agency. And so they kind of like put it together for clarification. And also, we talk about the MOU. So we are continuing, we continue working on the MOU between the Homeless Coalition and the county. And the board member expressed concern about some of the county proposed edits. edits to the MOU. So, we will have a revised version soon to the Board later this year. That is all for the
Homeless Coalition?
Coalition.
Okay.
And then for the Sonoma Clean Power, we say goodbye to two amazing Directors, Director Faj and Director, oh my God, the name.
Melanie Bagby.
No, no, Melanie Bagby, we already did. The Supervisor, Wullet Supervisor. No, no, no. The name, I'm having a hard time. Gerard, sorry, I'm butchering his name. He had to, it was his term, last term. He said goodbye to everybody. And also, we welcomed Rebecca Simmensen to the Board. And so, the Event Center will be hosting different event throughout the holidays, just to, to have people coming and continue learning. There will be public events and also private events. We received also internal operation and the monthly Finance Report. The legislation part was really brief because right now they are in recess, so we did also receive update on Sonoma Clean Power Authority tribal engagement effort. So, we have been purposely working with all the minority groups, and so we have been talking to the tribe, different tribe around the region to try to see how they can be part of the movement, which is Sonoma Clean Power, and how they can be served as well like everybody else. And also, we received a presentation. We, we gave an input on guideline to inform drafting a future policy on selecting energy projects, so, and that will be it for Sonoma Clean Power.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Elword. Next, Councilwoman Rodriguez, Roanoke Park Chamber of Commerce AM Breakfast and the Golf Course Oversight Committee Meeting. We'll soon be getting some new members.
I believe the Chamber of Commerce, I reported out at our last meeting on the 22nd. That was with Congressman Thompson.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Coming by, and he gave his info then of how things were going in the district, which were going pretty well. And then for our Golf Course Oversight Committee Meeting, we had a pretty quick meeting update on how maintenance is going, how things are looking. They're looking pretty well. There is a good number of folks that have joined the Leagues and have memberships at Foxtail, and now with the Top Tracer that's been in place, it's brought in folks that might not have been before. And they just had a Veterans Day breakfast yesterday. All proceeds were going to the nonprofit Folds of Honor, and they also had their Halloween event, and they're gonna have an upcoming, like, golf cart parade. Last year, they were set up to be outside, and last minute, it rained, so this year, they're prepped to be inside, and we expect it'll probably be nice and sunny that day, but they are prepared, and it's always fun to see the kiddos go out there and just kind of enjoy the property and, and seeing different community vendors as well, so, good meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Councilwoman Sanborn, Joint Water Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee to the Sonoma Water Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 4th of November, we had our Joint Water Advisory Committee, Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, i.e. the WAC-TAC meeting. We gave a proclamation to Pam Jean, who's the Assistant GM at Sonoma Water and is retiring after many years of service, and also proclamation to Mike Healy, who is an outgoing Water Advisory Committee Member. Other things that happened at the meeting, we approved the schedule for meetings next year. It's on the website. We received a presentation on the proposed creation of an Alexandra Valley Water District, so that would cover the region that's a little bit above Cloverdale and then down to the east of Healdsburg, and the overall goal is to better estimate and understand the water demand and use. And so, right now, they're in the application process of forming this water district and then working on collecting signatures for over half of the acreage owners. So, it would be a combination of both large and small, think, you know, gallow and rural, you know, kind of larger wineries and such, and then smaller users. And they'll be doing that signature collection through the summer, 2025, and they are requesting the support of elected officials and of LAFCO to form as an agency through LAFCO. We also received a budget update for the end of the fiscal year 2324. Water delivery was just a little bit under, 1.3% under budget. That comes out to 530 acre feet. And lastly, we received an update on the very exciting Potter Valley Project in January of 2025. PG&E is expecting to release their proposal for decommissioning the dams, and so comments are gonna be due, you know, based on that timeline in June. Sonoma Water had a 60% design kickoff meeting for a whopping $2 million project for conceptual plans, and this is needed to come up with a plan to keep the diversion going after the surrender and decommissioning happens. Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Judice, Golden Gate Bridge Highway Transportation District.
Yep.
Golden Gate Bridge Highway Transportation District, again, at Sonoma County Transportation.
Okay, yeah, we met in person, obviously, October 24th and 25th. We awarded a very large contract to rebuild the San Francisco Ferry West Terminal. It was in disrepair for sure, years and years of, you know, significant damage, you know, from the boats hitting the terminal, et cetera, and replacing the East Berth Ramp as well. So all those repairs will be happening, there'll be some small delays and stuff, but we'll work through it. We received distinguished budget award for our 2425 budget. Of note, though, it was, it was balanced with $30 million of transfers in, and of course, on a long-term basis, that's not financially sustainable, so that's what we're working on with the bridge. Finally, traffic along the 101 corridor is still almost 30% below pre-pandemic levels. We continue to improve incrementally, and we'll see where that goes. SCTA did not meet yesterday because of the holiday. We will meet next Monday, so if, if it could be on the agenda for next Tuesday, that would be great.
Thank you very much. As you can see, there's, I don't have any meetings to report out this week. Next week, I will, but we have had a lot going on under government, this one section reports under this one section of the Government Code, League of California Cities. And what I'd like you to do is, if you just want to pick out one thing that your, what your takeaway was, or what you appreciated by that conference that we all attended together, and then we'll go after that to, well, I'll give you a minute to think, the 2024 Sonoma County Employment of People of Disabilities Awards. I was not able to attend that. Roanoke Park Chamber New Times Luncheon, the Annual Champions for Children Event, Dia de los Cien, 21st Annual Cope Awards, and then the Veteran Celebration yesterday. So, who would like to start about what your takeaway was from the League of California Cities Conference?
Okay, good. I think, although I, I joined you guys down there a little later in the week, one of the many themes I saw is, we listened to things together and dispersed out, is Roanoke Park's doing a lot of things that seem to be being talked about of, you should look at doing this. So, we're kind of ahead of the curve here, which is great to see, and I am still very proud when folks kind of say like, well, do you guys ever not hang out together? And it's like, no, our council actually gets along and enjoy being around each other, and I think it was, it was great to be able to, like, reaffirm that. I knew that, but sometimes it's nice to hear from, from other folks, and not just locally, it's like Sonoma County Marin. It's like, there are other cities that have seen us at these conferences and are like, okay, there's Roanoke Park, and it's like, yep, there we are, you see one, you usually find all of us. So it's good, and it's nice to connect and, and also compare notes with folks, although we've done things, right, like our unhoused, it's good to kind of compare notes with other places that are also doing it, and what's working for them, what, what are things that maybe we could consider adjusting, or, you know, so if it was up to me, we'd have all the awards from them, but here we are.
You ready, Emily?
Yeah, I just, I was kind of having to pick and choose. I would say, out of the sessions that we attended, I really enjoyed the one hosted by Jan, who is a consultant for us, and she talked about having a functional meeting and having a functional council and how critical that is to the city running. And she had a lot of nice things to say about us as a council and how we're able to collaborate, and I really do think that that is at the, that and the combination of having a fantastic staff is really at the foundation of how we're able to get stuff done here as a team. So, thanks, everyone. And then, just as a side note, one of my favorite speakers was Celeste Hedley. She's an author, and I had listened to some of her podcasts, and she just has some wonderful insights about how to have better conversations, so I recommend you look her up. Celeste, C-E-L-E-S-T-E, Hedley, H-E-A-D-L-E.
All right, thank you. Ms. Elword.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I liked the, there was a session that I went, and Senator Josh Newman was talking about the homeless and the programs that they have been using down south and how it's been working for the community. For me, it was just, just a reminder that the work that we have done here and the program that have been implementing here in the city sure works, and that we can find a solution if we have political will. That's what I got out of that presentation. And also, there was a financial session that I went with the Vice Mayor. Willie also reminded us that, reminded me that it is very important to have a healthy finance in, in order to do what we needed to do. So basically, money is the key to a lot of things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I enjoyed the conference, it was very nice. Dinner was lovely. And it seemed like module after module that we attended, Councilwoman Rodriguez pointed out, yeah, we're like, okay, we're doing that, we did that, we tried that, and so, very active, whether it was with homelessness, whether it was with housing, whether it was with downtown, you know, just a lot of things that we're already currently doing. My favorite module was the one on climate resilience districts, and I'd like to find out more about that. I was very curious, very interesting how that happens and where they would be a good idea and where they're not such a great idea, so taking a look at that. But yeah, that was, overall, I thought it was a good experience, and yeah, I think that's about it.
Thank you. As I attended the conferences, the different classes, I thought to myself, is this a class that the City of Roanoke Park Leadership Team could have put on? And out of, I don't know, eight classes that I attended, six of them easily could have been put on by people here on our team. We're doing a lot of the things that they're talking about and suggesting, as Councilwoman Rodriguez said. There were a couple that stood out to me, this one, well, this is, this was one of the, when, you know, they have the, what do they call that room that you go in where they've got all the vendors?
The Exhibition Hall.
The Exhibition, right, Exhibition Hall. I picked up a flyer from a group that talks about serving the many, not just the noisy few, and so I'd like to, at some point, visit, you know, the possibility of maybe working with some of these people who can help us go into the community and measure what people are thinking, and they have a pretty good track record for, you know, seeing what people are thinking. It's not necessarily what's on social media. So I think that's super important for us to kind of get into the community, into our community and find out. And then, the other one was, you know, speaking of what Councilwoman Rodriguez said, all of us came to support Jackie when she was sworn in to be a member of the leadership team for the Black Caucus.
Yeah, that was cool.
That was very nice. I think we were the only council there, the whole council there was to support their new, their, their membership, so that was great. Okay, so does anybody have anything they want to talk about the Roanoke Park Chamber Newtime? I think I was the only person there, me and Paul. That was just me and Paul, okay. The Legal Aid was there, and they mostly talked about business opportunities they had for people who had businesses, and if you want to contact them, let me know, and we'll, we'll connect you. The next was the Annual Champions for Children Event. I don't know who attended that.
I was supposed to attend that one and Dia de los Cien. Unfortunately, I was pretty ill, so couldn't go, but I did see that it was a well-attended event. It's Champions for Children and Forests, and they acknowledge a lot of organizations and individuals who are champions for children and making sure that we're taking care of the next generation. And then Dia de los Cien, unfortunately, I missed. It was their 15th, so their quinceañera, and I heard nothing but great things, highlighting vendors, and I think it was timely, given the community, to be able to lean on one another last Friday, and then just kind of dance and be happy. So Los Cien did another incredible job with, with that event, and I'm sorry to have missed it.
So the other, the other event I think that's not listed on here was the, the event that our Community Services Team put on, the Community Center for Halloween.
That was great.
Yeah, the, the Fright Show and the whole nine yards. Tiara's here, thank you very much, Tiara, for the work your, your crew has done. You're doing a great job in the absence of your leader. She'll be back soon, don't worry. We got a little tour through the haunted house in the bright light of day, so I appreciated that as well, but that was a lot of fun. And it never ceases to amaze me, all these kids come and line up to play the games, like circus or carnival games, and they just absolutely love that, raise a lot of money for the, the fifth grade field trip. And then, Councilwoman Elword, could you just address the 21st Annual Cope Award banquet? You and I and Marcella were there, if you wanted to talk about that for a minute? And Gerard, I'm sorry, it was at your house, wasn't it?
Well, not my house. Not my business.
Your, your restaurant. Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, it was well-attended, and it was great to see so many people being recognized for the role that they've been doing for our communities, and it felt great to just see that happen and support them.
And then they raised, what, almost $30,000 for the resiliency fund? Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
That, that was pretty impressive. Okay, and then, yesterday, we had our Veterans Day Celebration over at the Community Center. I thought that was very well done. Our community band and our community chorus, and I have to say, the, the Girl Scouts were the highlight of the, absolute highlight of the event, so thank you for that. Okay, so number 10, communications. Copies of communications been provided to council. Does anybody have anything? We've received some communications recently that they'd like to address at this time.
I have a couple. I just wanted to share, it is, it is Native American Heritage Month, and Sacramento, the capital, just had an event, it was their first ever, I believe, parade on Saturday, so it's kind of neat to see that on social media highlighted. And currently, today and tomorrow, there is a free human trafficking training happening at Sonoma State University in partnership with Redemption House. So if folks are interested and have the time, I think that's a pretty interesting topic to be able to learn more about. And congratulations to Rancho Cattati Volleyball, they placed second in the championship, I believe. I'm so sorry if I got that wrong, but they did great. And, and Cattati Roanoke Park Unified School District are having, the elementary schools are having their school tours right now as they gear up for TK registration, so check their website for more info if you or someone you know is looking to tour all the amazing schools here. And also, the Rancho Cattati Boosters just announced their crab feed is coming up. I apologize, I did not write down the date, but crab feeds are coming up. So, it's a great, February 1st, and I know our chamber one will be coming up as well. So those are always great ways to have a good time and give back to community. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
I do, I do. So just a couple of things, community comments. Our Rotary Club on Thanksgiving will be feeding anyone who would like to be fed. Our Rotary Club on Thanksgiving will be feeding anyone who would like to be fed in, at the senior center in Roanoke Park from 11 o'clock till 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Please do show up. It's a wonderful, beautiful event, and the Rotary Club is very proud to, you know, to put it on year after year. Next Monday, we will launch our toy drive, the Rotary Club will. We serve about 180 families in Roanoke Park, making sure that all the kids have toys for Christmas. So if you'd like to donate, see me or, or talk to anybody who's in the Rotary Club, or you can drop them by over at CVE. And so we're excited to, to do that. And finally, I had the pleasure and the honor of attending a three-day retreat, a first responders retreat up in Hillsburg, learning resiliency techniques and really understanding what our first responders go through, the trauma that they experience. And, you know, the motto is, is putting PSTD out of business, and that's exactly what we, what Sue and, and her group intend to do. It was, it was truly a life-changing experience to watch these officers doing yoga and meditating and breathing rituals and coloring and painting and sharing some really personal stories as they understood the difference between their parasympathetic and sympathetic nerve systems and, and how to, you know, process the grief and the trauma that they experience as first responders, because it comes out in so many different ways. You know, cancer rates, suicide, alcohol and drug addiction, infidelity, you know, it comes out in a lot of different behaviors. So watching these officers, these firefighters, these first responders, you know, go through the training was great, and I just couldn't help to think, boy, we're, most of the people were in their 40s or 50s, and so we're seeing them deep into their careers, suffering this trauma. Wouldn't it be great if it was just like, at 24, you wouldn't have had this training? So when you started your career, you know, you could be in a better mindset to process it. So it was a great experience. I want to thank first responders, and I would encourage all of you to, to take the training. It's, it's quite an eye-opener. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, yes.
And I too got to attend just the opening morning session for the First Responders Resiliency Center, and it was phenomenal. And I did wish I could stay for all three days, but I was not able to. I have two other communications. One is that tomorrow, our Public Safety Department is hosting, as part of the Alzheimer's Awareness Month, a training. It's going to be at 500 City Center Drive, or sorry, no, am I wrong? It's at the library. Sorry, you can register in person or at the...
What, what time is it? Is it tomorrow?
It is tomorrow. It is 10:30?
Hey.
Yes. And it's until 11:30. So that's Wednesday, November 13th, at the library. And then the other thing was Linda Supervisor, Linda Hopkins is actually also hosting something. She has a virtual town hall that is being hosted via Zoom. It's on the 20th at 6:00 PM, and it's just going to be a showcase of local organizations that are dedicated to supporting LGBTQIA folks and anything related to women's reproductive health care and documented community members, social safety net, mental health services in the environment, so that people can feel safe and know where they can go to be taken care of and take care for each other. So the Zoom link's going to be posted on the Sonoma County website, so that's sonomacounty.ca.gov forward slash we take care of us. There's a hyphen between each of those, so we hyphen take hyphen care of us.
Thank you very much. Any other comments about communications? Okay, I, I have one comment. The impression was given by one of our colleagues at our last council meeting that this council is what it is today for the most part because of the hard work the labor unions have been doing behind the scenes. And I was very surprised by this comment, and I feel a strong need to provide my perspective, which is, I was personally elected by a broad coalition of residents with the help of over 50 volunteers who dialed the phone and knocked on doors with me in District 5, and not just by one special interest group. So, thank you very much. All right, are there any public...
Was that, was that supposed to be a part of this comment or public comment?
Yeah, no, this was a response to communications that I'd received.
Okay, then I will have, I had something planned.
Okay.
So I want to, this is to address to, first of all, during the October 22nd meeting, I made that comment that, a council member, that the mayor just said, it's me. I said, I know that our council is what it is today for the most part because of labor and because of the hard, hard work they've been doing behind the scenes. After reviewing that comment, I personally, you know, after reviewing my comment and with the benefit of the 2020 hindsight, I realized that they did not accurately reflect what happened. And I know, I am not a prideful person. I know when I make mistakes, I know how to fix it myself. I deeply regret the hard work and the dedication of each of my four colleagues who worked diligently with an array of volunteers from across the political spectrum to win their seats at the table. For me, the labor, for me to state, labor put them in their seats with a misrepresentation, and I acknowledge that. And I take full responsibility with that. And when it comes to the work that we'll be doing when it comes to the development, I want to assure those that have put me here, my constituent, when I took an oath the first time here, I promised to serve and protect. And the reason why you put me in that seat, because you wanted fairness. You wanted someone that would advocate for everybody and have the voice of everybody at the table. And that's what I have done since day one. It won't change. I have dedicated my life and will continue to do so as long as you keep me in that seat to be your voice. This position that you have put me, we all know, is a nonpartisan, a fight for everybody, a fight for those that agree and disagree with me. My job is to enhance your voice. My fight is to bring a project that we all will enjoy for the rest of our lives, being here or not here. When fighting and speaking about labor force, labor force, it's not just union jobs, because we know, I know personally, we have small businesses who also want to be involved in that project. We have those that want to build, that be, build that downtown and who are not part of the union. This is to make sure that those of the labor force here in Roanoke Park first to get the job of their dream, to build their own downtown. I will never take that away from you. It's never my intention, you didn't put me here to fight against you. You put me here to advocate for you. I have proven it, I will continue to do it, I will continue to fight for you and for everyone. I do not distinguish those that supported me or not, because as my constituent, you are the reason I am here, even during harder time and good time. I am here to serve you. I am a servant. I am not here for anything else but to do what is best for you. And I wanted you to hear that. As a leader, yes, you make mistake, you own your mistake, and you move on. Do not be frightened. This project is not going to go away. We're going to make sure, I am going to make sure that you build your downtown and enjoy it for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items under communications? If not, we'll go on to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just like to appreciate Councilmember Elward for her grace in acknowledging that we're all human and we do make these mistakes. And I also appreciate our constituents' grace and their own kind of being able to contact and, you know, say, hey, we have a question here. So as Councilmember Elward said, we're going to continue forward, and, and I think it takes a lot, it's very easy for people to say, I'm not, I'm not going to acknowledge it, right? And so I want to just thank her for doing that in a public setting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I add something? As a mom, I don't have favorite child. I fight for all my three children the same, and they know. And that is the same for you.
All right, item 11, adding agenda items to a future city council meeting. Is there anybody who'd like to add anything to a future agenda item? Okay. Number 12, public comments. You have any public comment cards?
I do have a comment card from Mr. Gary Kaufman.
He's back. Good evening, City Council. My name is Gary Kaufman. I live in L Section. I'm quite sure that you've missed me, but I'm back. I don't know the year it was, but when the city council was down on the corner, I attended council meetings, and I walked out a lot because the council members were, in my opinion, taking personal items and fighting on a council. I started to hear that. I'd like not to hear it anymore. I was talking to a few people about the, the town center that you want to build, and on the Friday night, whatever it's called across the street, Market, and they were suggesting that maybe when you're building the town center, you should build a pedestrian crossway for people to go across so they don't have to take the risk of, of crossing in the traffic. Right now, people walk across the street because there's not enough parking on Friday nights, and I don't know what the parking is going to be on either side when the city does get its city center. So I guess maybe it might be interested in throwing that around or something with the planning commissioner, whoever you do it with. And anyway, I'm back. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you very much.